Okay. Are we ready? As soon as she gets back to her seat. I'm not pushing you or anything. I wouldn't do that.
No, I actually just installed with the Ted guy, so I can do it from my seat and it's offline.
Oh, that would be nice. Okay.
You get your steps in this way, though.
That's right.
Yeah, add it to the steps. Now, if I just did that too, we'd be okay. Okay, ready? I want to call order the regular council meeting for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. And Teresa, will you call the roll?
Mayor Chip Dutcher.
Here.
Ryan Green.
Here.
Doug Lerner.
Here.
Marvin Block.
Here.
Ben Lee.
Here.
Sharon Hendren.
Here.
Councilman Lee, would you lead us in invocation?
Yep. Lord, thank you for bringing us together here this evening to discuss, deliberate, decide on those issues most important to the city of Johnstown, to the broader community. Please guide our discussion and our thought in productive, meaningful, efficient, effective manners to come to those conclusions. Please continue to watch over our military men and women, both home and abroad. Please continue to bring your grace to those who are suffering in any capacity. Bring peace where there is none. Please continue to watch over our first responders as well. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is action on minutes. I don't know, I guess we'll take these individually. First up is March 15th. It was a special council meeting. And does anybody have any additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Ben has moved, Doug has seconded. Teresa, you want to call the roll?
Yes, Ryan Green.
Yes.
Doug Lerner.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Mayor Dutcher.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Okay, minutes for March 15th are approved. Next up is the regular council meeting on March 15th. Are there any additions or corrections to those?
None of them is written.
Ben has moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Doug has seconded. Teresa, you want to call the roll?
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Doug Lerner.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Mayor Dutcher.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Okay, next up is the special work session that was held on March 25th, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they were written?
I'll move to approve.
Doug has moved to approve. Is there a second? Sharon has seconded. And Teresa, we call the roll.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Doug Lerner.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Mayor Dutcher.
Yes. Oh, I wasn't there, so I'll abstain.
You can either abstain due to absence, or you can... That's what I wrote. I won't be invited either way.
I'll abstain because I was not there. It's not a good excuse.
Ben Lee.
Abstain due to absence.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
So those minutes are also approved. Next up is correspondence. We've received some correspondence from the Department of Commerce and the Liquor Control Authority. First up is, and I guess we will consider these individually, is we have been notified of a permit for the Dashing Diner. And I don't know of any problem with that. And if anybody else does speak up now, or we will, I guess, do we have to, do we have to do a motion on it, or just?
No, I don't need a motion. I just need to notify.
The Liquor Control Board. That we don't, we don't need a hearing.
There's no request for hearing, I'll just let them know.
Anybody? If not, Teresa, you're good to go. Also, there's a transfer of a license from Valesa Incorporated to Del Rio Grande. They were the holder of the license, so the license is being transferred to Del Rio, Mexican restaurant. And I don't have a problem with that either, but does anybody have, want a hearing?
Did you just change, change names out there, or change?
Well, cha-, it's transferring the license from one Valesa Incorporated. I think that may have been the previous folks to the new folks. And they've been there for a while, the Del Rio people.
Never hear any trouble, ever, do we?
No, I've never had any problem, so I don't know of any. So I don't see a need for a hearing there either. Teresa, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, next is personally sad to me that we will accept the, I don't know whether we need to formally accept it, but.
Yeah.
I guess we should. Cheryl's resignation. Cheryl has been a great member of council, and we will all miss her. And, but we will move on. And just as the city of Johnstown will move ahead, and we thank her for her service, we thank her for her friendship, and we will miss her. And at that, I'd like to have a motion to accept Cheryl's resignation.
I so move.
I'll second.
Ben moved, seconded. Teresa, you want to call the roll?
Doug Lerner.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Mayor Dutcher.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Now, while we're on this subject, Ben has also submitted his resignation of, it doesn't take effect until the 18th of April, but we will go ahead and vote on it tonight. He would like to keep his position on the events committee, and without any objection from a council member, I'm all for that because I know none of us know as much about the Fourth of July as he does, and we're glad he's doing it.
Go ahead. We talked about, it's not off the subject, it's on the subject. We talked about a Chamber of Commerce here. And I'll ask you, Ben, do you think that that would be a favorable, for you to work with the event committee and try to get these organizations in Johnstown, like downtown Johnstown, the different ones, just working downtown to get a umbrella under a Chamber of Commerce and, and have them work with them to do the events thing with our support?
Ultimately, I think that is where the goal would lie from a nonprofit standpoint, which is why the intent was to build the events committee with the city council foundation and backing, but ultimately have it funded and run independent with representation from council, but from the, the community side of things. And moving long-term into that, I think is, is viable for sure.
That's what I'd like to see if we can do it.
Sure. I think going into year two with the fireworks event, and we had a meeting with Lindsay and Laney with, about the parade and things like that, and trying to help where we can, bring some efficiencies and some feedback, especially from, from last year, broadening the scope of involvement to help with that, definitely would, would fall under that purview. So I think for sure seeing that long-term is viable.
So work with that goal on? Ben, I think I speak for all of us. We will miss you. You have been a great member of this council. And you're welcome back anytime, and we will miss you.
Well, thank you.
Godspeed.
I appreciate it.
So if somebody will make a motion, we can move on?
I make a motion.
To accept the resignation. Ben moved, is there a second?
The only, the only question I had on it was the dates and with how the, with appointing the new members and how that shakes out.
We have, well, by Ben holding off on the, the 18th, we have an ex-, that gives us an extra 30 days if we can't.
On the second member?
On the second member, in case we can't, in case we A, don't get enough letters of interest, or B, we can't come to a conclusion or a decision. And this gives us an extra time, and we thank you for doing that, and it will be helpful. And I think we can probably come to a conclusion, but we will miss you. Teresa, you want to call the roll?
I was just saying it'd be odd if a council member chose their successor.
No, that's, that's not what this is about.
As long as we, not that I don't.
We get an extra.
That'd just be an odd.
If needed, we have an extra 30 days.
Okay.
So anyhow.
I had a first base, Sharon, who was the second?
Marvin.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Mayor Dutcher.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Abstain.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Doug Lerner.
Yes.
Again, thank you.
Yes.
Next up, citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. I will, I will, lately I've been updating folks on intel, and I will hold off on that till a little later in the meeting and tell you what I, what meetings I've been attending, what's been said, who's doing what, that I know about. That doesn't mean that there's not stuff I don't know about, but I'm asking lots of questions, and I'll, I'll share that a little later. But the citizen comments on matters not on the agenda, the podium is yours. One, and then Louis, you can, after him.
Jeff Letts, Jug, Jug Road Street. The intel project is a wake-up call to look at where we are and how we got here. Official narrative is, about the intel project is like a drug commercial about how everything is going to be wonderful without the five seconds at the end that tell you possible side effects may include a rash, heart attack, death, or all of the above. In Georgia, outside of Atlanta, they are faced with a similar situation, different company, where all of a sudden thousands of acres of farmland are being gobbled up with, again, no input from those who live there. Like our situation, the environmental impact study is expected to be completed long after it is too late to stop anything. At least in Georgia, there was a study by the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission that concluded that it would negatively impact groundwater, generate hazardous waste, change the character, nature, and cultural resources of an area that has stayed mostly rural, at full speed ahead. Back in Ohio, the main talking point is jobs, 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 in an area that has a huge problem with businesses reducing hours, services, or both, because they don't have enough employees. No reason to let logic get in the way of a good sales pitch. So the state is kicking in five cents of every tax dollar to help a company that has twice the revenues of the state. Again, no reason to let logic get in the way. $2 billion is a hard figure to wrap your head around, but it is enough to give a $100,000 grant to 20,000 small businesses hurt by the recent government policies. If each business, on average, expands enough to hire just one extra employee, the result would be an additional 20,000 jobs. How many jobs is intel promising? I know, they are good jobs. Plus, it displays hundreds of families demolish homes while taking thousands of acres of farmland out of production. What a deal. Ohio steals billions from the poor and middle class to give it to the rich. Some people are very excited to see their home values skyrocket, not realizing it means higher taxes, and if they decide to move, many will need to get at least twice what they paid in order to get a comparable house that may be twice the commute. But it looks good on paper. When a tornado destroys a house, it is news. When the New Albany Cabal destroys a house, it's just another day of the New Albany cyclone. How many homes have they destroyed? How many homes have they surrounded by warehouses? One thing for sure, New Albany is Ohio's number one home record. While the current occupier, the White House, talks about food shortages, the Cabal consumes more and more farmland and reduces food production in our area alone by hundreds of thousands of bushels. Did you know Bill Gates of hell and the Chinese together own more farmland than nine states have? Nothing to see here. Someone talked about Johnstown getting their share of the gold. I hate to tell you, the gold is for those in the club, and as George Carlin once said, we ain't in it. We have the gold now, country living with close proximity to the big city, and they plan on taking all that gold, except of course for the king of New Albany, who gets to remain on his palatial estate. It seems even the best of government entities inevitably look to grow the entity, not the people, whether it be the township, county, or city. The county engineer can't wait to hand over more roads to the New Albany Cabal. The county gets the same revenue, but has less maintenance costs while giving away residents' rights. It's a win-win, right? So what is the solution? It's contained in Second Chronicles. If my people, among whom my name is called, do humble themselves and pray, and seek my presence, and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear in heaven and be merciful to their sin, and will heal their land. I do have some questions that I can give you that I, I asked a reporter, and they said they would answer it in the coming months and years. I hope and maybe you guys can get some answers a little sooner. How many houses has the New Albany Cabal torn down the last 10 years, and how many more are they planning to tear down the next five? What is the average price increase in homes in the area the last couple of years? Why are the schools agreeing to tax abatements, and why do schools get to forgive taxes for some individuals, industries while making others pay the full load? And who makes up the taxes that are abated? I did ask the school about that, but I haven't heard back. Why does the New Albany Cabal think it's okay to leave islands of homes surrounded by warehouses and factories? Is it part of their coercion strategy to pressure people out? I.e., if you can't, you can stay, but we're going to build a warehouse all around you. Why do the Lincoln County Commissioners, such as county engineer, feel it's okay to pass resolutions giving the New Albany Cabal control over county roads with zero input from those residents affected? Why did ODOT turn over road planning to the New Albany Cabal? Why does the New Albany Cabal feel they do not have to answer township trustees, state representatives, Johnson City Council, Johnstown City Council, et cetera? Why is the state contributing $2 billion, but not a dime to help those affected relocate? These days, it takes a lot of time and money to just move, a lot of time and money to fix up a place to how you want it, et cetera. And remember, location, location, location. Where are those families going to find as good a location? Thank you.
Thanks. Next, anybody else? Louis?
Just let Louis off in the chair.
I think you can make it. I'd be happy if you wanted to say.
Louis, Main, 132 North Main Street.
Okay, Louis.
I have three items tonight. The first one, and that is that approximately seven and a half years ago, there were three of us on the ballot that hold seats on this council. Ben Lee, Cheryl Robertson, and myself. All three of us were fortunate enough to assume those positions. And having the opportunity to work with Cheryl and Ben, I sincerely express my sympathy of the two leading this council. They have both been great assets to not only council, but to the community. So for both of those individuals, I say thank you for the community.
Thank you.
The other item, which is a brief one, and that is that I've read in the paper little clips about information not being made available because we don't have a newspaper. I would like to recommend that council give consideration to using the electronic sign uptown every Tuesday to announce and promote the, or city meetings, planning, planning and zoning, and the council meeting, so that the people are aware of when they are occurring. And the third item is briefly about intel. The only thing I can say in support of the city of New Albany and the homeowners that sold their property, it's their property, they have the right to do with it what they want to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Louis.
Can I respond to the first gentleman?
Sure. Uh, be better not to.
I was just going to tell him that.
Just be better not to. I'm not going to tell you no, but.
Well, I wanted to.
If you, if you, getting into a discussion is.
No, I just wanted to find out where Johnstown sits in this. You, you talked about Johnstown and intel. Johnstown has nothing to do with that, except we're like everybody else. It surprises us as much as anybody else. It's not our territory. We have control over what's inside the village limits.
City.
Or city, I'm sorry, city limits. And we can't even go out and solicit for annexation. Now that that project's going on, the only thing we can do is try and cooperate and work and make the best of it, because it's, it's not a Johnstown's bringing, but it's here, and we're going to have to make the best out of it and work with it. I just wanted you to understand that we was never a part of that planning or anything there, and I agree with what they said, what he said about the, Louis said about people owning their farms and properties. They got to do what they want to do with their own properties.
Yeah, I think, my, my thing, I understand what you say, and it's, my, my point is, we need to take this as an opportunity, because so many people were, were, you know, it was like it was a sneak attack, and, and there were people that, you know, that were sold their properties because, and they had these non-disclosure agreements. So there's a lot of stuff going on underneath that shouldn't go on, it should be all upfront and have the input of the community, which it did not.
Anybody else?
I want to speak for the farmers. Farmers aren't being forced to sell. They're being, they want to sell, and they, they're tired of working that hard, and people say, I want to see farm ground, or go buy their farm there. You know, they're, they're offering good prices.
There was somebody who was buying a farm on Sportsman's Club, and the Cabal came in and told them if they would break that contract, they would pay them in cash.
But that's between two individuals, and it's their right as the owner of that property to do what they would like. Called property rights. Anyhow, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Next up is council committee reports, planning and zoning met on 3/22. Next is meeting on 4/12. I don't think there's anything new. Bailey?
We had a variance, two variance applications.
Oh, you had, okay.
Yeah, we had variance application.
One for an electronic sign in front of the Catholic Church. That variance was to allow an electronic sign in your district.
Because they're going to have an electronic sign, right?
Yes. You had to get a variance first to allow it in your district, and it was approved. The next was a variance to decrease the required setback of a new gas station in town. The only setback they had a problem with was on their canopy, and they needed enough room for the truck radius to allow trucks underneath the canopy, and that was approved as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Safety and Service met this evening, and Ben, or I, I guess it's Ben, right? Ben? For the left.
I'll try and make this brief.
We're, we're used to you, so go ahead.
That wasn't nice.
Well, I gotta have a little levity.
It's funny because it's true. So Jack, we'll have some construction project updates, I'm sure he's a part of the manager in the service department piece, or can, can tag on to this. But we talked about construction projects going on around town, of which there are numerous. We got a couple items that we talked through and took votes on in Safety and Service that we want to bring to council that have financial aspects to them as a part of the water and wastewater expansion projects. But I will touch on, we have quite a few things here. The Mobility Hub is an item we can quickly cover, so I brought up the, the contract that the city has with Etch as a part of the Mobility Hub that is developing proprietary software for regional transit and to bring some efficiencies to that area. It was a part of our Mobility Hub project, and we were partnering because LCAT's, the county, had given us a quarter million dollar grant with which to proceed with this project. The ownership of the software will go to LCAT's, but Johnstown was managing the contract as a part of the broader Mobility Hub concept. My question came up about where we were with that, with the, with Jim Lerner leaving, and I had a conversation with Darlene Mangold, who is the CEO of Etch, last week, who gave me some updates on how that is proceeding. Bailey and Darlene and Matt from LCAT's is having weekly meetings on Fridays to continue down this path, but the exciting piece is that this is in a position to be tested next month, and to utilize Johnstown as the hub from which to do it, having a, a pickup and drop-off through an app-type service, integrating with the Transit Board, and there are operations that would happen in the Commerce Center downtown, and you'd have a point-of-sight pickup, you'd have a home pickup, one-way round trip. But the exciting thing is that it's in this testing phase and can be incorporated into further applications for grants and projects with federal funding, local state, and things like that as it relates to the mobility piece. So the Mobility Hub concept continues to move forward, which is, which is exciting. Chip gave some intel updates, which I'll let him do here whenever, whenever he wants to, but there are a couple things that we want to bring forward from Safety and Service. The wastewater, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, you want to add to any of these, the wastewater treatment plant extent, expansion project has a, a piece that is a stream study that needs to be done to move that project forward. The initial estimate was that it would be in the $300,000 range, and that the company that we would have to use has a two- or three-year waiting timeframe. That is unacceptable, especially based on the global conversation that we're having about intel and all the development going on around here, so we were able to find a company that can do it soon to keep that project moving forward at a $50,000 cost, so a win in all areas. The, the need right now is, and it was three to zero in Safety and Service, is to bring it up to council, have a, a motion, a second, and a vote to move forward with signing that contract. The funding of it is there, but the hope is that we can loop the funding into the larger project as a whole. But if need be, we could kind of check and loop it into what we're asking for as a part of the intel piece. Did I miss anything on that?
You covered it completely.
Fantastic. So with that, are there any questions, comments, or concerns about a motion, a second, and a vote on moving forward with the stream study at $50,000? Ultimately, it would come out of the bonded money that we have earmarked towards the wastewater project anyway, so it's not necessarily an additional expense because it's already been, been appropriated in the budget for this.
And if we can find somebody else to pay for it, we will find somebody else to pay for it.
So questions, I think Sharon and Ryan, it's primarily to you, because the four of us were here for that meeting, but is there anything?
I'll look.
Okay.
No questions.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion to move forward with, with that.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Teresa, you want to call the roll?
Mayor Dutcher.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Doug Lerner.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to the water side of things. So the water side of things is moving along at a faster pace, we're to the point where we can design.
Correct.
The design piece with Jacobs is moving into a Phase Two, and the total project is being budgeted as $14.5 million. The design piece of it is being budgeted at $1.2 million. Again, similar story, what is being asked is that we move forward with that project and the design phase, because as we all know, with any kind of major project that we have, be it street or capital expense, the design and engineering piece definitely puts you leagues ahead of anybody else when you talk about additional funding requests and applications. So the way that the budget is set right now, we pretty much have a little over $1.2 million sitting in, the leftover bonded money that we have earmarked towards the water expansion project, that's again appropriated for this year, but in a very similar, same type of narrative, that is, would only be expended as the Plan B or C, whereas this whole project is being looped into, again, the greater ask to the powers that be that hold the purse strings that would fund something like this as a result of the developments happening here in a regional sense. So knowing that we need to move forward, period, and we have that backup to be able to pay that money regardless, and knowing that we need the design done anyway, the motion was in Safety and Service to move forward three-zero, and so similar. And so similarly, Ryan, Sharon, I would ask if there's any questions or comments or Jack, if there's anything you want to add to that.
Yep, you covered it as well, but I will field any questions.
I'm good with it.
I'm okay.
We're good? All right. So I'll go ahead and make the motion then to proceed with that in a similar fashion.
I'll second.
It moved and seconded, Teresa, you want to call the roll?
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Doug Lander.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Mayor Dacha.
Yes.
Jack, you're gonna cover the construction projects.
Yes.
Later, so that's fine. We talked about the Pulte traffic signal. This is something that we need to talk about. Because this has immediacy to it before the next meeting that would happen for council. Essentially, I don't know, Jack, do you want to give an update on this and what the plan is for Monday?
Yes.
And I can loop in on what the dates are that we just?
Yes. We've been working with Pulte quite some time. They have a requirement of putting a traffic signal out at Bigelow and sixty-two or pay money in lieu of for an alternative route. And we have been trying to get them to get their traffic cost and design costs into our engineers for review. To date, we don't have that done. So I've called emergence, uh, I'm gonna call it an emergency meeting with Pulte, with the village solicitor and with the village engineers to prompt them to get this work into us. Because we feel we're far enough into the Pulte project and the houses are left. We, we need to get this light situation taken care of. My goal coming out of the meeting Monday is not that they can build a light or determine the alternative route in this short amount of time. But we have a bond securing Johnstown for the cost of either way, whichever we choose to go with their agreement. So, uh, I don't have the exact time, but we've agreed on Monday that's coming. We will have a meeting between the entities and, uh, we're either going to secure a bond to cover the village interests here or we will stop, uh, building permits until such time we have got that bond in place.
Yeah, this conversation has been happening in multiple committees within the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had Pulte representatives in Planning and Zoning early last year, I believe, to talk about this specifically. We're all under the same understanding of what the request is, the requirement is, the original verbal communication and agreement. The acknowledgements are there. It's on the record that they understand what is, what is, uh, the need is, the request is, the desire is. And the communication has been pretty steady between the city and their representatives. The, the concern comes with the timing and that now we're toward the end of what their build out is. And we know what is, was on the table and what needs to be done with respect to the additional traffic that's coming out of that development. So what we talked about in safety and service, and similarly, we're gonna ask for comments, questions and a vote in council, is that if, if there is no agreement that comes out of the meeting on the eleventh, that there is a stop build request, stop work request issued by the city the following morning as soon as possible until such time that agreement is reached. The second scenario is that if an agreement is reached coming out of that meeting, that a deadline be placed Friday, end of business day on the fifteenth for receipt of that bond, the agreed upon level to the city. If none is received by end of business day on Friday, then beginning of business or eleven fifty-nine PM on Friday, twelve oh one AM on Saturday, there's a stop work request initiated as well until such time that the bond for the agreed upon amount is received. That, the conversation that we had in safety and service is essentially what we deem to be the, the last appropriate action we have at this point to ensure that the agreements that were in place, that are still in place, are honored to the will of council at the betterment of the community. So are there any questions?
No, I, I agree with this. This was something that we brought up in zoning early last year. And when we approved their final phase, this was something that I, that I asked about. And I don't think it'll be a surprise to them, shouldn't be. I mean, we, we asked them then, so.
We've talked about it so many times and we've been very lenient with the timeline up to this point.
Yep.
Anybody else? I'm ready to make the motion.
Ballroom needs?
Please.
Move that Jack take a letter with him from the council telling Pulte if we don't come out of this meeting with an agreement, that the bond, the building will be shut off at twelve oh one AM on the April the twelfth. Regardless that we need a bond by the, what is the Friday there?
Fifteenth.
By the fifteenth by five o'clock for one and a half million dollars. That would be for a street light, uh, either way they go. Or if they want to buy property, I think they're gonna try to put you off so they can negotiate with Altera about buying the property. We need a bond regardless.
Yep. Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a?
I'll second.
Sharon has seconded, uh, discussion? Hearing none, Teresa, you want to call the roll?
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Doug Lander.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Mayor Dacha.
Yes.
Ben Lee.
Yes.
Okay. Back to you.
Were you gonna give intel updates later?
Yeah, I'll do it. I, I'll do part of it now, if that, that works for you. Um, I just want to update everybody. We had a meeting with the Ohio Department of Development last week. It was, I thought it was a really good meeting. We, and we presented Johnstown's wish list to the state of Ohio officially. That included covering the water plant extension, expansion, the wastewater plant expansion, the water line expansion. It included a number of roads that need to be fixed. The mobility hub was on that, on the list. Recreation and a park trail and some planning dollars. This was a preliminary list that we presented to the director. It was well received. She said she'd see what she could do. And I know from hearing back from folks that were working with her that it's being discussed. So, uh, if, and we also are looking at the federal side to get federal dollars in here to help pay for this stuff. I looked at, that we are, we, we, it may be in New Albany, but we are the ones that are one mile from this, this, this project. And everybody knows that Johnstown is poor and we can't afford it on our own. And, and that we need their help. And, uh, the word that's coming down from the state of Ohio is that we will, they will do everything they can to help us. And I believe them. And until such time as they don't follow through and do something, then I may not believe them. But at this point, I'm willing to work with them and we have to find money to do all this stuff anywhere we can. Cause it's not fair to hit our taxpayers to pay for it. And, uh, cause we, we have too much to do in too short a time. I would, I would also, um, we're planning to do a business briefing on Thursday morning. When the hell day is it?
Twenty-first.
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 The twenty-first, I'm sorry. I had my, my shingle shot yesterday and, and, uh, I'm having reactions.
See him on your neck a little bit.
It's, yeah. So anyhow, uh, uh, who was it?
Twenty-first.
Oh, the twenty-first. We're having this business, we're, we were inviting all the businesses located in Johnstown and close by to come to a meeting with Scott Ryan, our former state representative, who now works, um, in the Ohio Department of Development, assigned by the governor to be Licking County's eyes and ears on the intel project. And he will be here and we've got a panel, uh, one Columbus, who is the development arm, who is up to their eyeballs in this whole intel project. And I've been told by them that if the intel person has been named, I understand they've been hired, but they haven't been publicly named yet, that they will be bringing that intel person out here for one of their first, uh, meet the public episodes. And, uh, we look forward to them being here. And we look forward to them answering their own questions for once. And the rest of us can sit back and listen to what the real story is. So, so that's on the twenty-first. Invites are going out tomorrow. It's an R S V P, uh, uh, event. However, uh, don't feel left out. We're gonna do a community-wide event at the Performing Arts Center. I'm working with the school board to, uh, figure out the date. And everybody's gonna be invited and it should be an interesting evening. And we'll do a similar, uh, a similar, uh, panel discussion. And then they'll be available to answer questions of the community. And we're looking at mid-May for that, uh, probably a Wednesday or Thursday night. So that, those are the big things. You might notice that on our website, we have posted some, some, uh, information that has come forward from Intel on the project. And it's there for anybody and it's, it's official information. Also, uh, the city of New Albany shared with us their, their hearing schedule on the, uh, they're doing hearings on the zoning changes. You may have seen these little signs that are all over out there, uh, which you can't read. They look nice, but you can't read the damn thing. And, uh, uh, so anyhow, they have a planning hearing on the fourth, on the nineteenth. They go, go to their council and on the third of, the third of May. ODOT, ODOT is having a meeting. They are presenting, I guess it's the first preliminary transit, transportation plan is going to be, uh, I'm going to a meeting Thursday morning at the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission where that, that plan is gonna be unveiled for the first time. I can't wait to see it. I will keep reminding them as I have every time I have the opportunity. Roads have two ends. Don't forget us. You can't just think about Mink and one sixty-one. That Mink also has another end and it's called Jersey Street and thirty-seven. So that, I think I will stop there. I could go on and on, but that's, that's, that's good for now. Thank you.
Yeah. And, uh, the last item we'll bring up under safety and service is, is more of a, I guess a heads up for everybody. It, it came out of a conversation, other business and safety and service. And the thought is to put it out there for everybody to digest. Now that in two weeks, it sounds like it'll be on the agenda for further discussion and decision on how to move forward. There are several parts to this. I don't know, Jack or Chief, if you want to address them first or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, step up to this. Uh, in previous meetings, we had discussions whether we wanted to keep Maris Court or not keep Maris Court. And that I think the consensus right now is that we want to keep Maris Court. So then we have to decide, um, where is the clerk of courts? Who is gonna be the clerk of courts and where they're going to be housed? The chief has a desire to, to move the clerk of courts and the Maris Court business out of the police station. However, we have logistical problems with that as, uh, the entire setup and much of the information that the clerk for the Maris Court would need is over in the police station. Also, we have a situation which the, the individual that is the clerk of Maris Court has, has taken a position as a Johnstown police officer. So we need to make a number of determinations, you know? Are we sure we're gonna keep Maris Court? We're gonna, we're gonna have a discussion and a vote on that. Where the housing is going to be for the Maris Court clerk? Is that Maris Court clerk gonna be a part-time or full-time position? If it's just a part-time position, she will just take, she or he will just take care of Maris Court. If it's full-time, then we need to adjust the other duties as Maris Court is not a full-time position. And then also, what are we going to do with having somebody in the police station to answer the main office, front the doors, how, or take care of people that walk through the doors? How is that going to be handled? We currently have a hiring freeze on right now, which that will also be part of the discussion. Because to bring new personnel in, we will have to lift that hiring freeze. And, uh, with our new H R group, we will have to create job descriptions and decide what classification and what pay ranges they will be in. Chief, would you like to add anything to that?
I, I think you actually touched on it pretty adequately there and everything's pretty much covered. The, another thing just for consideration too, is that if that employee was to move, there would be the expenses of equipment, being new desk. And, uh, those type of items, stationary items, what may not, because the desks we have in there are physically attached to the wall. So we won't be able to take those desks over to the new area. And then, uh, the drug drop-off box is also a concern of mine too. So, um, that needs to be housed. So when we have it in operation, it needs to be physically watched at all times. Um, cause we don't want, want anybody fishing from it. And, uh, we've processed over the last two years, uh, nearly nine hundred pounds worth of pills in the incinerator. So it is a very successful program.
So the idea was to?
That's what I have.
Just give the update tonight to give everybody some time to ideate and then come back for maybe a broader, deeper discussion and some decisions in two weeks.
Great.
Like that's all I have for safety and service.
Questions for Ben?
That was not quick.
No, it's okay.
There was a lot.
You're forgiven. Okay. Finance, uh, next meeting is on April nineteenth. Hopefully we'll have a couple other people added to that committee so we can have a core. Economic development bit on April first. I would just hit the high points here and, and briefly wrap up. We had a great discussion about Intel and economic development within the Johnstown community. We talked about, um, uh, some of the, some of the folks that are bringing new businesses here. One being Armstrong Steel Ceilings is adding thirty-seven thousand square feet or forty?
Forty.
Forty thousand square feet.
Seventy, Chip.
What is it? Seventy? I was wrong.
The plan is five, fifty thousand, they're building another seventy.
Okay. And then there's some discussion with, uh, Curaleaf about possible expansion of their business. We know Tech is already building a new factory on their site. So, and then, uh, we understand Dunkin' Donuts is coming. So people who like Dunkin' Donuts will have a place to pull in and get a donut and a coffee and whatever. And, uh, I also heard of a emergency, emergent care coming to, out by Kroger's. And then, uh, a new, uh, I don't, I, I'm not sure who it is, but a credit union is moving in too. So those, those are what I know at this point. Stay tuned for further developments as, uh, this is only the beginning. So things are, things are hopping. So economic development will meet again on the fifth, the sixth of May. Anything, Doug, that I forgot? Any big?
I think that's all.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yep.
On these expansions and things, are they coming in to negotiate, uh, packages on their taxes and stuff?
No.
Well.
They are?
We received a, a CRA application from Steel Ceilings.
Really?
And, um, Bailey and I have been working on that with our law director.
Okay.
And they are within that CRA district that is established. So they have a right to.
They want any tax abatement? Okay.
Cause it's about to.
We'll have to think about that.
What about the other one?
Uh, New River, uh, oh, Curaleaf? I, I think their current abatement has run out. If I'm not, has it?
We've only gotten the one CRA application.
Right. Then, and, and the one that Andy Joseph had has, has, uh, run, run its course, I think. I'm pretty sure.
That's it, ten years old?
Uh, it was ten years and it's, it's been ten years though. Cause it, it was done on his original building. And then he moved to that site and then Curaleaf bought the current site or didn't buy it. He leases it.
Leasing it.
So that, that has, that has expired. And the, the county tax, um,
Tax incentive review council?
That, that group, they canceled their meeting. Luckily, I, I looked at the website and didn't go and, cause I was on my way to New York.
Cause that's the only thing that Johnstown has on them.
Yeah, that's the only one of, that's, that, and I think it's expired, so. But I was going to the meeting anyway, just to hear what they're up to. Park and Rec, next meeting is on the nineteenth of April. And, uh, we have, uh, we've applied, uh, for a state grant. And we have, we've applied for a state grant through Representative Frazier. We also have gotten commitment from Senator Hoddinger to be put in the state capital budget for a splash pad to be added to the Trailhead Park. And also a, a amphitheater, not like New Albany's, just a scaled-down Johnstown version of an amphitheater that the Big Red Band asked, is there a place where we could play a concert in the spring outside? And we found them this nice hill over by the American Legion and we're working with engineers and hopefully the state capital budget will include those two projects for us. And hopefully that'll all come to pass. The Tree Commission met on March 22nd. It meets next on the April 26th. And then there's, next up is the Events Committee. Ben, Ben has expressed an interest in staying on the Events Committee and, and we like that because the rest of us like that he's doing that and he knows more about it than we do. And including the fireworks and who's paying what and how that's all gonna be laid out and how many feet you gotta be away and all of that. So we're glad he's there and gonna continue to do that for us. The Design Review Board is next meeting on April the 12th here in council chambers. And I think that hits all the committees. Anybody got questions? Any other thing they wanna bring up? If not, we'll move on to Director Reports. Jack, you got service?
Yes, and I'm gonna try to move through the water sewer and street relatively quickly because the manager's report has a little bit of length to it we're gonna wanna cover. So the first we're gonna cover is, is the Street Department. If you look on page one, you know, we, we keep account of how many lights were getting switched over to the LED because we chose not to do this as one large program, just as the ballots go bad and we're switching over. So there were six more lights changed over. You can see the list, the, the man of course salting roads during the last month, sign repairs, street sweeping has started up again as the, it's got warmer outside and, and it's useful to use. Couple of things that I do wanna point out here is there were two water services replaced on Jersey, five curb boxes were replaced and obvious due to spring rains and trying to keep ahead of it, a lot of storm let-in cleaning and catch basin repair. If we turn to the next page, a, a very important fact is, you know, we have a lot of new members on the Street Department. Two more of those employees have passed their CDL tests, so it's good, so they can be outfitted and be put in all the trucks. Again, here is the chart that just shows comparative hours month to month that was spent on each of the items that are listed below. I won't go through those. But the bottom left-hand picture, the Hannes Park, it's not a sign, well, the memorial, the marble piece has been reinstalled and is back up and we're very glad. That took a while to do, we had to get a few different parts, but it's up and looks good and I think it's sturdy. The next page is really important, at least in my mind it is. As you know, I requested a while back and we, we have hired a part-time mechanic slash help for the, uh, Street Department. Because so many of our trucks due to age and situations, we're spending days and days in the shop, we didn't have them, didn't have them to work. So if you go across the top here, I've asked him to list what department the vehicle is being worked out of so I can get the bills paid directly out of the right departments. But if you move over to where you see parts and cost and labor, for each one of those repairs he is working on, you can see what it costs us in parts and we see what it costs us in labor. If you go to the very next item, or it says vendor comparable costs, I asked him to get together just normal shop costs and hourly put together. So if you just take a look at that, what we would, you know, normally pay, or what we paid $2,400 plus 87 hours of labor, if we would've sent that out, we'd have had over $7,000 worth of estimated costs for those repairs and we would not have had the equipment done timely. The reason repaired timely, the reason I have asked him to put this sheet together for me so I can look at monthly, as we show the savings and the reason that this individual was on here, and again, he's a part-time individual, I also wanna show you the tools needed to do the job. Now, where it says lift, obviously we're jacking those up and blocking it and he's crawling under that way, I want to point that out to you. And then a lot of times you'll see Dwayne's tools, Dwayne's tools, cause they're specialty tools to work on trucks that, because we have never had a mechanic, they're there. So I'm bringing this to your attention because next budget season, I wanna talk to you about if we're gonna maintain and keep a mechanic on staff, I thi, I think it's important that we get him the tools that he needs to work on and not use his personal tools from home, bringing those in back and forth. So, and then he's gonna give me a priority list of what tools he believes, you know, we might not be able to buy everything in one year, but what tools he believes are the most necessary to continue that type of work. Any questions on the Street Department?
I'm gonna ask you about the tool situation.
Yes.
Have you, he, does he have all the tools he needs to work on our equipment?
No, we, we have had to go out and buy some tools and we, obviously we have a tool and maintenance budget that I was working that out of, but we still don't have all the tools we need for him to work to do those things. So he has graciously, when we need something that we don't have in stock. And again, this is a new, this is new for us. We've never had a mechanic onsite for, for those departments. He's graciously bringing those in because we have basically exhausted the tool budget and we're not even halfway through the year and we tapped into the maintenance. So I told him we're gonna have to, you know, there may be items that we cannot work on because we don't have the tools, that'll have to go to the shop and he, he graciously says, well, if I have the tool at home, you know, until we can get it bought, I'll bring it in and use it. So I think that's a positive.
What, did, does he get benefits or just a salary?
No, he's just a salaried, part-time employee, yes.
What was? Well, how much?
I don't know.
I-
I can't remember what the amount was.
I think he's making $20 now or something like that. Maybe it's 1915.
It's not uncommon for mechanics in a garage, you know, most mechanic garages have their own tools though. And many of them buy their own tools just because of, you know? It's not uncommon for tools to walk off either, not that, not at all that he would, but I'm just saying with, you know, when you, a lot of people working on stuff, things walk off.
But he was the head mechanic in, for the city of Gehanna for many years. And he doesn't want a full-time job, that's, that's not what he's interested in, you know, he, he retired from Gehanna and just was wanting, you know, to work roughly 20, 24 hours a week. So that's what we've got him doing. And, but I do, I do think, of course in Gehanna, he didn't use his own tools, those were, you know, tools supplied by Gehanna. I just, I bring this up just so we can discuss it come budget season, what we need, what would benefit him. And, or at some point he will retire and if we find this to be fruitful, we'll probably wanna bring a mechanic on, maybe even a full-time mechanic at that time. And we need to have that outfit of tools there for them.
Questions for Jack?
Did you see what we saved? $3,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, now his, his hourly rate is tied in there too.
Well, no, I, I figured his hourly rate-
Oh, you did?
Plus what the, the parts cost us.
Right.
Come up to 4183, outsourcing that would've been $7,080. So we saved almost $3,000, 2,900 and something.
And of course, over the winter, we've had him working from the time he comes in in the morning till the time he comes home. Of course, we were kinda hoping we'd get most of these things repaired and fixed and you can see the different items he's fixed, uh, because we were planning on using him for some mowing and stuff this summer, spring and summer as well. But I think as we get caught up on the maintenance of this equipment, we'll probably do okay.
As he gets used to the equipment, he'll do preventive maintenance on it too, Josh.
Yes, cause if you see on the last column, I think it does say P and M on the top, you know, things that have mileage such as oil change and things like that, he has those listed and recorded on his spreadsheet. Okay.
Questions? Anything else?
Well, jumping into the water report, the biggest thing here is continued four-hours training with the staff. Your plant superintendent also has been participating in webinars through the AWWA. We've got our line pulled out. Terry is very concerned, he wanted me to show you, you'll see the, the hardness of the water is a little above what we have the normal range and concerned him, but it's nothing he can do, cause as we are pulling out of the deeper aquifer, we knew that water was harder in that deeper aquifer and we're gonna have to battle that as we pull more water out of the deeper aquifers. But we are battling that already in the design of the new plant. We're gonna add soda ash to remove more non-carbonate hardness. So this is a temporary thing when the new plant comes online. We knew that deeper aquifer that we're starting to pull out of has harder water, it's a little harder to treat, but in the new system, we will be able to combat that and get the hardness back down to where it belongs. Then I wanna jump into, oh, last page, I want you to look at the spike, basically in the time change where we're at on water already. We set a record for pumpage for the month of March. Of course, that increase has a lot to do with the lighter, longer, more daytime hours, people up longer, but also in compared to previous years, I mean, you know, 19 million, 19 and a half million last year at this time and we're at 20 and a half million just over same time period this year. So more houses, more activity, more things going on, which just continues to show us that we need this water plant upgrade to keep up with the usage. Now I'm gonna jump into the waste facility. As always, you can look at the plant efficiency charts, you see everything, 97, 98% removals. The guys down there again are doing a great job trying to update and improve our iWork system. If you wanna read under the GIS work, Rick's been doing a lot of correction and making improvements on this system and getting it in a more accurate base for when we share this with engineers and developers, they can have a better look at where the lines actually are and the line sizing. So he gave a little comment there, the work he's been working on. Also, if you go to the, up towards the top, you see amount of sludge pressed, we're up over a half million gallons pressing sludge. There again, gets into the upgrades of the plant and the storage facility of the plant, we're, we're just growing. And these gallonages that we are working with are showing that that growth is here. The next page I added, I actually had to twist his arm to do this, but, cause he said, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, look like we're showing off or showing up. I said, no, council needs to know this. Columbus State has a group that they asked to come through and check our operations. They have potential plant operators and people that'll be in this field or associated fields. And Rick took a day and took them tour through, actually both plants. He took them clear through the wastewater plant and then said, well, you know, we have another field of interest here, which is a water plant, and he actually brought them up and took them through the water plant as well. Here's just a short page of letters coming back from some of the students that actually came and comments on how Rick operated the plant, what they saw and how it was an interest to them. So if you have a minute or two, I think that'd be nice if you read that. I thought that was really nice, how Columbus State responded. Go to the next page, you'll see Logan Drake has completed another set of training and certifications, which has now made him eligible to go for his Class III State Certification for Wastewater Treatment. So we're very proud of him there. Septage receiving, as you knew last, beginning, end of last month, into this month, New Day was making some repairs on their equipment. We're gonna see that pick up. And on bulk water hauling, you know, we're not into that season yet, but as you can see, as next month hits, we had, we expect a lot of bulk water to be hauled. Okay, that's water, sewer and streets. Any questions on those three? Yes, sir?
I have two quick questions. I saw on the Street Department report that the pedestrian counter on the bike path was replaced, did it go back?
Repaired.
Or is it repaired?
There was water in the cable and we had to do some troubleshooting on it and it just-
Okay. And then the GIS for iWork that's here on the last report, is there any concern or is it normal for there to be reported that a lot of the points collected were marked in the wrong location?
Well-
Cause this was done by a contracted entity.
Yes, and there were two things, as, as we've dug into this and tried to make iWorks more usable every day, a lot of the manhole covers that they located were actually stormed and they placed them under sanitary. So Rick has done a good job in working with them at no charge of getting them separated, but it is taking man-hours for Rick to actually physically get those separated. We also, on their GIS location, saw that they might be off five feet from where they should be. And that is outside of the location or the distance of allowable use that they said it would be. So Rick has been going through again diligently checking those things and the X and Y coordinates and making corrections. So when the whole system came back, we, we assumed that the, the location of each of those GIS were correct. Not all the maps of the different, of the different sections are off, but there were a few that he is going through and actually checking.
Wouldn't that validation be a function of the contract by the third party instead of having to expend man-hours on the city side? Just with as tight as our labor is, you would expect this would be something that would come within a scope of reasonability, but with things being mislabeled and then GIS coordinates being off by, by five feet, ugly ignorance as to what maybe an allowable percentage is or what the contract states is an allowable percentage, but it just seems a little excessive and then to have our limited resources going in to check it when it's a contracted type of service, it seems like they should be the ones coming out here and checking.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I, I did not delve into this with Rick, but I will do that to, to see what the contract was. He seemed satisfied that they are working with him on making these corrections, but I did not, I have not had time recently to delve into this with him.
Sure.
So I will-
I just wanted to call it out.
No, no, I, I'm with you, but you know, he felt it was something that obviously he's spending a fair amount of time on, enough on that he put it in the report.
Right.
So I will try to get better answers to your questions for that.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate it. It pays a lot of appreciation as well, cause it's not a small job.
On a GIS map, five feet's not terrible.
And if that's the case, that's totally fine.
The county auditors say the one that they use is plus or minus 10 feet sometimes.
Fair.
Yeah, but I think in our contract, they told us they would be within one to two feet.
Yeah.
And that's why-
Well, if that's what they told us then, then yes.
So, yeah.
And that's why it pays for us to expend the limited hours that we have to correct that.
Maybe it would, maybe it would be better off and get them upset right now, let Rick get through with it, getting them all changed and corrected and send them a bill for his time.
Well, again, I, I, I wanna say this, let, let me talk with Rick to see how much time he's expending, how far they're actually off, what he's finding and what it's taking him to make those corrections, because I have not delved into that with him. Okay, now, now I'm gonna jump into the manager's report, which some of it we've covered, so I'll try to go quickly.
If you can't cover your, comb your hair different so we recognize you as manager?
Yeah, yeah. Under the Water Department, we've already discussed, as soon as Yaz finalizes the contract, we've been going back and forth, we're ready to sign that contract to start Phase Two, which is the design of the water plant. The Duncan Plains Water Line, which connects 62 to the New Commerce Park, has been designed, has been sent into the EPA. has been designed, has been sent into the EPA for its PTI. And the water tower, as soon as the weather warms up enough and we have a fifty, a steady fifty degrees, then the bowl that will be ready to paint and then raised to the top of the tower and we'll be getting closer to getting that tower into function. Jumping to the wastewater facility, we talked about the fifty thousand dollars to do the stream study to complete Phase One of that project. So we know what our design at the plant will be. Jumping to roads, the Edwards Road bid came in. Notice of awards have been sent out. To follow will be pre-con meetings and then we'll get a schedule for start of work. Johnstown's total expense on this is seventy-two thousand, roughly five hundred dollars. This is not a full-depth repair. This is just a mill and fill over the top. There's hardly any base repair to this. The High Public Works is putting thirty-three thousand into this. Johnstown portion is, is thirty-nine thousand. So roughly just short of half of that is being covered. East Jersey Project, which will be new pavement, new water lines, new sidewalks from thirty-seven down to the trailhead. As you know, we got that Public Works Award and that will be bid out in May. We are currently getting work easements for the new sidewalks to go in. And there's a few trees at the far end of that road that are dead up there. We need to get work easements to have those cut out. And that covers the amount of projects I was going to bring up tonight. Are there any questions about those or any other project you would like to discuss?
I do. Person over in Concord Crossing, now this was my idea.
Okay.
Some of you got the email probably. She wants to know when we're going to work on Concord Crossing streets and she's taken pictures and et cetera.
As soon as you give me enough money to do it.
And I kind of told, I told her I would bring it up. So I'm bringing it up.
We, we did have that. A lot of those roads, as you recall, was on the resealing list. But due to the price of oil and the cost of that resealing went way up and we had to cut that list back. They will be on the list again next year.
For resealing.
For resealing.
But some of them remained on the list.
Some of them remained on the list, yes. But, but not all of them, as you know. We, we got an estimate for that, middle of last year was roughly a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And I think then we said, okay, we want to do the work this year because we've got it put in the budget in September. Of course, you can't hold a quote for six months. We went back out and said, okay, we want to do these streets, the readjusted quote. We usually see them within seven percent. It went, if I recall right, up to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So when we called back and said, hey, what happened? Price of oil went from sixty dollars a barrel to a hundred and twenty. And that directly affects their costs. So we had to reduce the amount of streets. Well, council had a choice, as you recall. We either had to put more money into it or reduce the amount of streets. And council opted to reduce the amount of streets. And I don't have a problem with that decision because like this East Jersey Project that were, that, you know, the total rebuild of that road, we might expect the same type of thing on that, you know? The estimate may be outrun by current events.
Could we offer those residents in that neighborhood if they wanted to pass a petition and get the roads done in there if they want to put additional tax on their property to pay for it?
Thank you, Marvin.
Well, no, I mean, it's a serious consideration. If, if it affects your home values and everything else and if we don't have the budget to do it, then they want to do it, they can do it.
You're going to continue to do some of the hot.
Oh, yes.
Use our hot machine and.
Yes, we're going to use our hot machine. We're going to, you know, we're going to really dig in and do more patching this year because we've quit using cold patch. We're now using a hot mix. We bought a machine. So it's regular asphalt that we're going to be putting down instead of cold patch. We started that last year and obviously we're going to go into this year with it. But, and, and just for clarification, Sharon, that, that was a coating. It would have been a thin layer with a sealant on top of it. It would not going to be a mill and fill.
I see.
So, so, because mill and fill, we, we just, it would, we didn't even remotely have money to do that. The Edwards Road, sorry, just for a little bit of comparison, the East Jersey Project, which is a complete mill and fill, new water line replacement under the road. So we won't be digging into the road after the new road goes down. And sidewalk replacement is a one point three million dollar job just to get from State Route Thirty-seven down to the trailhead. If that just gives you an idea. So then when you think about all those roads in Concord to do mill and fill, you're, you're talking about millions of dollars.
I don't mind the road. I am used to.
Well, it's not good.
It's not that bad.
It's not good. I'm going to agree, they need done, but we can only, you know, as you know, we've spread around. We did North Oregon. We've done South Oregon. We've done a section of Cassin. We did Westview. You know, we're, we're trying to, to spread what we have around different areas of Johnstown.
Excuse me, Jack. As far as East Jersey.
Yes.
About, I don't know, fifty yards at the far end where the mill used to use the heavy trucks.
Yeah.
Is that base solid enough or is that going to have to be rebuilt?
This is all new base on East Jersey.
Oh, it's all, okay, I didn't hear that.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Now that, now obviously a mill and fill is much cheaper than if you do base repair. We are actually doing a full base repair on that entire road.
Okay.
Now to give you an example, and I know I'm taking time here.
That's all right.
But if you look at West Jersey, from Thirty-seven to Anaway, we did base repair and, and, and put asphalt down. From Anaway over the hill down past the water plant, done a year later, we did not do the base repair. It was much less expensive or much less, yeah, much less expensive. But if you drive that first section of road and then go over the hill and drive that lower section of the road, you can see how the asphalt is pulled, is starting to break apart, where the section of road that was actually done the year before with the base repair is still in great shape. So do we want to do a lot of lane miles and not do the base repair, but it doesn't hold up? Or do you want to fix it right and hopefully you can get fifteen to twenty years out of that road before you have to do the mill and fill again? Those are the questions that these folks have to struggle with every time.
But I, I knew the base was hard for that.
Concord Road, we did full base repair on that, Louis, as you remain. And I don't know how many years ago we, we did, redid Concord Road, but if you take a look at that road, it's solid.
Six years.
Six, it still hasn't moved. Go down there to the west end of Jersey from Anaway on. It was done five years ago. Take a look at that condition versus the road, sections where we did base repair. I'm not saying either is wrong. You can do more lane miles, obviously, without base repair, but within five, six years, it starts pulling apart.
Questions for Jack? Okay.
There I am done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Stick a fork in it.
We appreciate it. Mark's.
Stick a fork in it.
Okay, he's cooked, okay. Next, we're going to move to legislation. And Jack's, this is one of his projects. Resolution twenty-two dash fourteen is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Road Salt Contracts awarded for twenty-twenty-two.
Correct, and basically we, it's, it's a tough deal. We have to buy our salt every year before we know what it costs. That's one of our hardest things. So, yeah. We, we talked with ODOT. I had our street superintendent, Dan Swick, gave ODOT a call. They're anticipating around a twenty percent increase in price of salt this coming year. So I think we budgeted, what did I tell you, it was eighty-five dollars a ton? And we divided that into the forty-four thousand dollars that we allotted to buy salt and ended up with, we're going to purchase, I think, three hundred and twenty, or excuse, five hundred and twenty-three ton of salt. This will be the first year that we have to pick up salting State Route Sixty-two and Thirty-seven. So it, you know, we bought extra salt, but of course, if we have to cover those two main state routes through town, it will take a lot more salt because they're wide roads and we've got to keep up with it. So that being said, we, that's what the salt contract is for.
And tonight, we're going to have the introduction, which we just had. And we're going to do a public hearing and a vote. So I'm going to open the public here. Well, no, first I'm going to ask for a motion. Ben has moved it as their second.
Second.
Marvin has seconded. Now, we're going to have a public hearing. So we're going to open to the public. If you've got questions, now's your time about road salt. And.
Very interesting subject.
Yeah. Anyhow, hearing nobody, we will close the public hearing. And are there questions from council?
Two questions.
Okay, then.
You said this was an increase. I'm just curious, what is the comparative tonnage increase from last year to this year?
Well, it's not so much tonnage, but in, what I was saying, budget, because the tonnage goes up and down. I've bought salt as cheap as forty dollars a ton and paid as much as a hundred dollars a ton for it. So what I did to, to handle this, I increased our road salt budget from thirty-two thousand to forty-four thousand five hundred. And now the price of salt went up. So I'm not purchasing quite as much as I had hoped. I wanted to get six hundred ton. We're going to only end up getting five twenty-three.
And with the new salt barn, we're fine with.
Storage is good. And as soon as the bids come in, we'll probably have it delivered and, and get it in the building ready for use for next year.
Sorry, yeah.
Any other questions? If not, Teresa, you want to call the poll?
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Doug Lerner.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Eric Dutcher.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Okay, next up is ordinance zero-five dash twenty-twenty-two. Ordinance amending ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-one, the annual appropriation ordinance of the City of Johnstown to approve necessary changes of appropriations. This is the contract for the Seekmans. We had approved the contract. Now we have to put the money behind what we did. And it's just being introduced tonight. And I might point out, they're in Washington this week, meeting with Senators Brown and Portman and Congressman Baldurst. And so that was just for introduction. Next up is ordinance zero-six dash twenty-twenty-two.
I do have a question on that one.
Okay.
So I know that it came, when we did have our work session with them, it came to my attention that they said in other places, their marching orders are very clear. That wasn't necessarily the case here. I know that, I know we had our work session here recently where we had talked about, you know, the items that we wanted to come up with them, you know, to go on our behalf and lobby for. So with this paperwork here, is this, is this the plan for them to lobby for?
They are working on all of those things. They, they also have a whole other additional list of stuff. The two state capital budget items were on their list also. And they have worked with Mark Frazier and Senator Hoddington to get those in the state capital budget. So that's on their list. Also, another big item for them is federal funds via, via the Biden administration to help us with our list from the fed side as opposed to the state side. Because there are federal dollars involved too and they're out, they're actively seeking those. And that's why they're meeting with Portman and meeting with Brown.
Right, my point to it though is they were asking for feedback with us. My question was, on this list here, did this list come from somewhere in council?
That list came from Jack.
I actually generated that list. Now, I was not obviously at, at your work session. I was gone.
We had that work session at an inopportune time for everybody I know.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is when I was asked to generate that list, I didn't have the list from your work.
Okay.
Session, you know, Chip said Jack.
First of all, I didn't know, I didn't, I had very little prior knowledge of this meeting was going to be held with the Ohio Department of Development.
True.
Of course, when they, they said, can you come on this date at this time? I said, sure. But I wanted to give them something. I wanted to leave them with something that they had in their hot little hand that at least had some numbers on it. So that they're looking at something and so, so the, when we either up this or downsize it or whatever, they're not going to freak out because they've already seen this list. And, and I know it's been spread widely in the administration. They are going to come, I talked to the Seekmans yesterday, the day before. And they're going to bring a report of what exactly they have, meetings they've held, who they've talked to, what they've done, what dates, and they're going to present that to council at the next meeting.
Okay.
And based off of your special meeting that I was unable to attend, I'm sure we can add items.
Yeah.
As necessary. And we would just fit those into the priority list. Now, I obviously with the fourteen million and sixteen million dollar water and sewer plants, trying to get money for those two things, I, I place those at the top. But obviously council can redefine or reorganize that list as you see fit.
Doesn't that cover most of the things we talked about?
This, I was pleasantly surprised to see that this list, because I'd heard there was a list and I said, where did that list come from? Because I knew it didn't come from our work session.
Came from Jack and I. Because we had to have something.
Right, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, no unilateral decisions were accidentally being made or anything like that. I'm happy to see that this list does resemble our list. I think we did have a couple of things, but I think.
And we can add them.
Yeah, okay.
We're not limited.
And well, and that was my main thing, that and the Seekmans, hearing directly from the Seekmans that they didn't have, you know, a correct framework like they did in other places. I wanted to make sure we had that.
Well, this is our first time dealing with them.
I know.
And they will be here at the next meeting to discuss, present their report and take into whatever council wants to tell them to do.
And heading into month two of six, I wanted to make sure we're getting that money's worth out of them and they're getting concise directions.
But, but I want you to know for sure, this, this was not a unilateral act on my part. Chip said, hey, what's our projects? Do you have numbers? He got called to a very impromptu meeting that, that he knew he had to get to. So I was, you know, he and I together, but I threw a lot of those numbers and projects in there before I knew what you guys had, had come up with. But I do think they're.
And we can add to the list.
Yeah.
I think we're of the same mind because so many of the projects were the same, even though I wasn't at your meeting.
One thing we're going to have to realize and, and that they are not going to be able to produce a lot of money in six months because it has to go in and get put on people's books, on their budgets, on their wish lists and things. And it's going to take more than six months to get a lot of that stuff done.
It, it may, but, but we've got a, a quick start happening and they are, they've been meeting on our behalf. And that's what they're in Washington this week doing for us about federal dollars.
Well, what I, what I met Chip, by the time I get us on the list and get us on the budget.
Right, and, but we, we don't have, I think, yeah, there's part of that, but there's also things that the administration, whether it be the feds or the state, can just wave their magic wand and say, it's done. What, one of the, one of, one of their meetings they're having is with Jobs Ohio, which as you know, is a private, not a state, a state affiliated function. And they are after them for some dollars too. Anyhow, any other questions? I'd be happy to, and, and, and I want everybody's input on if we revise this thing, have at it. You know, but we just tried to get something on paper so I could hand it to them. Next up is ordinance, oh, we didn't, we didn't do this. We, it's just for introduction. So the Seekmans is just for introduction. And we'll see that next time and they'll be here next time. Ordinance oh-six dash twenty-twenty-two. Again, this is only for introduction. And this is the insurance to appropriate the insurance and property and casualty insurance premium. So anyhow, it's a, it's a, actually.
It went up.
It went up. What doesn't go up? And this is to set the money aside to pay it. Questions? Okay. So that concludes the legislative section. Any other? Any other business? Yes, Ben?
One item for other business. We had a-
Yeah.
-mental health and suicide prevention community conversation last year. It was mainly virtual. It was broadcast on Facebook Live, I believe, or maybe YouTube. I can't remember exactly how we did it.
Facebook Live, I think.
Was it, it was here with a panel of experts from a variety of departments within the county as well as locally here at the school district, chief room with the police department, faith-based organization leadership and things like that. I think a lot of conversation has been around the stresses that the community is facing with all of what's in front of us, what's happening, and the speed with which these, this information is being shared, disseminated, and the questions are being generated as a result, which all lends, the uncertainty lends to stress. My suggestion, and I will volunteer my time to organize it, however it's deemed best to do so, is to have a, another conversation this summer focusing maybe on stress or stress relief topics or something in that realm, in so much that I see there's a very relevant application to what's happening in the community today. So I wanted to put it out there because we had it, and I think at the end of the conversation last year, we talked about wanting to continue it in some form, and I said, would volunteer my time to help organize that on behalf of the city in a similar type fashion. So I wanted to put it out there to see what everybody thought.
Thank you. I think that was one of the-
St. Anne's has a wonderful program for that, a three-day program, and I just went through, cost me $90 if you got Medigold.
Anyhow, I think it, that's one of the best programs we did all of last year or the year before, I can't remember when we did it. It was well-received in the community. We got good feedback. Hopefully, if it helped one person, it was all worth it.
Absolutely.
So I think it's a good thing, and thank you for volunteering to put your time and effort into making sure we do it again. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, then we are going to do an executive session. I don't know what the, is there a plan to stay here or to-
Yep.
Well, I don't think anything's going to happen after, and it's just myself and council.
Right, and council. And-
We can take a break while we do it.
What's that?
We intend to break while we-
Yes, please.
Yeah, we will say, we will bid you all afon to do and see you next time. And I, and also to those folks who have joined us via whatever in the world we're using now, whether it be Facebook, whether it be-
YouTube.
YouTube, whether, whatever it is.
Social media.
Social media.
I'll move to enter into executive session.
Thank you, Ben.
For the consideration of the employment of a public employee with village council and Jack.
City council. There a second?
Seven.
Okay, so move to second and-
City council.
I heard Sharon.
I said, yeah.
This is going to be an extra creation thing. That would-
I don't hear you, Sharon.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Doug Lainer.
Yes.
Marvin Block.
Yes.
Eric Dutcher.
Yes.
Dennis Lee.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate you coming. It'd be very lonely here without you. Hey, Jimmy.
I want to-